All right, can you please rise and join the members of the Rybrook Police Department in leading the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, September 24th. It's 7:30. We just came from executive session where we discussed non-union compensation. Before we get started with the meeting, and actually I shouldn't say we just came, we were in executive session earlier, we just came from the Hall A where we were having a reception for the police department awards. And before we get to our other agenda items, I'm going to turn the floor over to our police chief, Greg Austin, for the presentation of the Rybrook Police Department Awards.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending this evening's Rybrook Police Department Awards ceremony. As the mayor introduced himself, we're here tonight with Mayor Jason Klein, trustees David Heiser, Susan Epstein, Sam Morlingel, Assistant to the Village Administrator Greg Rivera, and Village Attorney Ralph DeMarco. Police work is a difficult job, and I just want to say this upfront that we are very supportive, we have a very supportive mayor and board of trustees in Rybrook, and thank you for allowing us this opportunity tonight to present these awards and recognize our police officers. It's important for us to recognize police officers because they go above and beyond every day, and I feel it's really important to thank the officers for what they do. The Rybrook Police Department is a New York State accredited police department, and there are 174 police departments out of 500 in New York State that hold a state accreditation. And the accreditation program is growing. In 2021, there were 160 accredited police agencies. So we have been accredited since 2015, and this is something that is very beneficial to us as a police department because it guides us to be a professional police department. Every day, we work hard to be as excellent as we can, and we are committed to follow the best practices in policing. I want to thank the Rybrook Police Department Awards Committee, Detective Sergeant Eric Dangler, Sergeant Christopher Rue, Rybrook PBA President Sergeant Aron Weiss, and Sergeant Dan Bruno. The committee is chaired by Lieutenant John Arnold. The committee reviews submissions for awards and makes selections based on criteria which is defined in our police department procedure manual. This is a special night for me as a police chief because I get to recognize these officers for incidents that occurred between May 1st, 2021, and May 10th, 2024. So we have two officers who were unable to attend tonight because they're ill, so I'll just talk briefly about what they are being recognized. David Kryeski is being awarded a certificate of honorable mention on February 24th, 2023. Officer Kryeski monitored a radio transmission from the Portchester Police Department that they were in a slow speed pursuit of a stolen vehicle on Windsor Road in Rybrook. Officer Kryeski joined that pursuit and proceeded down Betsy Brown Road to the dead end by Old Oak Road, where the person driving the car crashed into the guardrail and drove past into Crawford Park, ultimately getting stuck in the mud. At that point, the person fled from the vehicle, and Officer Kryeski and a Portchester police officer pursued him. The officers cornered the suspect, they tased the suspect, and the taser was ineffective, and they ultimately had to wrestle this person to the ground and take him into custody. For that, Officer Kryeski is receiving a certificate of honorable mention. Sergeant Dan Bruno, in February of this year, investigated a case of, well, it started with a 911 call to the New York State Police where a person said that they were going to shoot up the Portchester Middle School. Police officers responded to the Portchester Middle School, notified the school district, the school district then put the school, put the entire school district on lockdown. We assigned a police officer to the Blindbrook School District, and Blindbrook went into a lockout. The detectives, Detective Randpola being one of the people involved in this, were able to determine subscriber information of the phone, and the phone was a burner phone with no subscriber information, so we couldn't tell who owned the phone. We were able to then ping the location of the phone and determine that the phone was located within the Portchester Middle School. And through investigation that day, officers were able to locate the phone and the student who called in the threat. And that student was then charged as a juvenile delinquent in the school district. As you can imagine, any type of school threat like that is very concerning to everyone involved, and it's something that you want to get resolved as soon as possible. You don't want to be left not knowing what was happening. And through the efforts of Sergeant Bruno and the members of the department, we were able to get this solved within a few hours. Our next awards are for P.O. Eli Dosari, Detective Aurel Lozala. So I want you to jump up here and join me. On September 10th, 2022, TD Bank on South Ridge Street called to report that there was a person who was currently in the bank who attempted to open a bank account with fraudulent documents three days early on September 7th. Officer Dosari and Detective Lozala responded to the bank and were told by bank employees that the suspect who was with the bank manager was asking how to receive cash advances on the account that she had opened a few days earlier. When the suspect saw officers in the bank, she attempted to flee but was apprehended in the parking lot. The suspect was charged with illegal possession of a forged instrument and was released on armed recognizance. For their diligent police work, investigation, and follow-up, the officers are both awarded with certificates of honorable mention. Now, we all hear stories of identity theft and fraud, and we never hear of someone getting caught and arrested for doing this, so this is particularly satisfying that these officers were able to get there, identify the person, and make the arrest. So congratulations.
On December 28th, 2022, an employee of Green and Tonic in the Rybridge Shopping Center reported that she was assaulted by a customer in the store. Upon the officer's arrival, the suspect had left the store and the victim fled to Soul Cycle for safety. The victim had a limited suspect description of height, weight, and clothing. The case was turned over to the detective bureau, and Detective Randpola and Sergeant Bruno were assigned to conduct the follow-up investigation. By investigation, detectives located a piece of cloth in the store that appeared to be out of place. By looking at the customers enrolled in Green and Tonic's loyalty program, detectives were able to identify two witnesses who were in the store at the time of the assault. The witnesses identified the piece of cloth that was found at the store to belong to the suspect, and witnesses also identified the suspect's vehicle that was captured on nearby surveillance video leaving the area. Based off license plate reader analysis, Detective Randpola identified a suspect, and the victim was able to pick the suspect from a photo array which positively identified him as the person who committed the assault. Again, using the license plate reader network, an alert was received on January 13th, 2023, that the suspect's vehicle was traveling on King Street. Officers located the car and placed the suspect under arrest. For their efforts, Detective Mark Randpola and Sergeant Daniel Bruno are awarded a department unit citation.
This is a particularly incredible story, and I'm very proud to share this with everyone. But I don't think many people really realize what happened on that night.
On October 2nd, 2021, at 10:30 PM, police officer Abel Tavares was off-duty traveling southbound onto Hudson River Parkway. Just past the Lincoln Avenue exit, P.O. Tavares stopped to assist a motorist who was pulled off the road. The motorist told P.O. Tavares that there was a rollover motor vehicle crash that ended up down in a bank into a wooded area. P.O. Tavares was told that the occupants were ejected from the car. P.O. Tavares immediately ran into the wooded area to render aid to the victims. He first located a female toddler that was ejected from the car. He quickly assessed the toddler for injuries and brought her to the top of the ridge so she could be easily located by responding emergency personnel. P.O. Tavares was then able to locate the second vehicle occupant who was ejected from the car. This person has severe trauma to his leg, and this person told P.O. Tavares that a third occupant was still in the car. P.O. Tavares then located the third victim, an adult female who sustained head trauma and injuries to her torso. P.O. Tavares provided emergency care to this victim until the arrival of EMS. All three victims were transported to the hospital, but unfortunately, the male victim did not survive and passed away a few weeks later. The other two victims of this accident survived, and for P.O. Tavares' quick thinking, trauma assessments, and initial medical care, he is awarded the Police Action Duty Award.
Before we conclude, I just ask Mayor Klein to say a few words.
Absolutely, yes. So first off, I just want to thank everyone for being here, you know, not just our officers, but all the family members as well. It's great that you came out to help support everyone here, and I know it's, you know, through your support that they're able to better perform their duties. And, you know, we in Rybrook, you know, we're a small community, and, you know, some people think a sleepy community. Those of us who have been here a long time, and those of us on the board knows there's a lot that goes on here. There's a lot going on in Rybrook at all times. And, you know, we really take our police department very seriously. It's something that we're very proud of. It's truly a community police force. And I want to take a minute also to recognize Chief Austin for the job that he does in helping spearhead the accreditation process when it began. And, like he said, making sure that this is run in a professional manner. But we also know that the department has been in very capable hands. And, you know, there's a lot to say about, you know, the difference between living in a community and working in a community. And there's more even to be said about having a role of police officer in that community when you're constantly being called on to respond to something, whether it's anything, you know, simple as, you know, having to help someone, you know, with, I mean, I'm sure you respond also to some of the alarms going off. But there are times when people are really in need, and we've heard some of these stories today. And you never bat an eye. You just, you respond. You respond in a professional manner, and you respond in a way that makes the community really proud to have a police force like this. You don't hear it every day, so I want to say it on behalf of the residents of Rybrook, thank you. Because some of the interactions you may have with them may not be the kindest, hey, why are you giving me that ticket? But they really are proud and thankful to have the quality of officer that we have in Rybrook, to have the professionalism with which every call is handled that we have here in Rybrook, and to have the level of service that we have because of the effort that you put in every single day. And we really, truly appreciate that. I know as the board, we're a little more informed of what goes on, and we certainly appreciate all of your efforts, but I can tell you, the residents as well, what I hear from them, they're very appreciative as well. So thank you for everything that you do.
Sure, I'd like to say that I see a lot of you patrolling all the time, and I call because I like reporting things, so we are, well, I feel like I'm part of the force in a certain way. But I thank you. I know our residents are so proud to have you all on the streets, and I know that they leave their houses to you, and we let you know when we're leaving town, and we know that our houses are safe, our community is safe, and it's hard work, and hearing these stories today reinforces that. So I know that there are so many other stories out there. Sometimes it's good for people to hear that, to know how loyal you are and how hard you work, and we really appreciate it. You picked great officers, so thank you so much, and detectives and sergeants, so thank you again.
I'd just like to say thank you guys and women for all your services. It's great. You guys do a wonderful job. Although Mayor Klein may say sleepy community, but you guys aren't sleepy, and you guys are doing your job, and you're doing a great job. Thank you.
I was just going to say, while it was my pleasure to applaud all the members of the police force who were honored tonight, I'd like to take a moment just to thank the entire police force. Because it's the entire police force that, from my perspective as a resident who's been here for 35 years, makes this community feel safe and basically makes me glad that I live in the village of Rybrook. So thank all of you.
Well, thank you, everyone. This concludes the ceremony. Again, I want to congratulate all the recipients, and we'll just take a few moments to take a few pictures on the dais with the board.
We should push the chair to the side.
Oh, yeah, probably to the side.
I think to the side would be a better photo op. Okay?
Should we push these just over a bit?
Go that way. You guys are coming around inside.
So stand right here, and you'll get a really nice photo.
Or a photo.
Yeah, you can do it. Just feel free to move all the chairs on any of your own. Move them out this way. Come on over. Here, we have to move this one. There you go.
Anybody coming this way?
Yeah.
Guys, go on.
Come on, guys, hurry.
I was good.
Well, John should be up here, too.
Yeah, come on, John. Please.
Do I get to sit on the end with him?
Yes, I don't get them.
Smile, guys.
They're about to be allowed to get in there also.
You guys give each other.
See now, I'm not sitting next to you.
Just move the chairs any which way.
Suck it in.
Yeah, move to the side a little, and now we can see you all in.
Abel, stop touching the butt.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If she wants you alone, you can take one alone.
You sure?
Take it, fine. What's the big deal? This is your night.
What fun is it if you can't be a pastor?
Come on, pops.
Hold on, who's the chair? Hold on, hold on, hold on. Oh, whoa, hold on.
Yeah, I'll get it right now.
Yeah, I can. Oh, heaven, just sneaking. Okay. You got it?
I'm sure it is.
You want one of them?
There you go.
He tried to say, oh, no.
That's it. Binky, sit down.
All right, come on, let's go.
Same on his hand.
Can you get a picture?
Got it, you guys. All right. That's it.
Anybody else? All right, this is it. Let's go. Do it. That's right, that's what I would do. They get, they get these?
Yes.
No, I think sometimes that we should have, you know, when they're doing more. I hope that I made that clear, like we should pay all. I didn't think before I said we didn't prepare anything.
Very good off the top.
Thank you.
How we doing, everybody?
Yeah, doing good. How about you?
Hey, they say Italy, someplace in Italy, they'll give you $32,000 to move there.
Tuscan.
I just read that. Tuscan, $32,000. To move to Tuscan.
They want people to move there, so they're incentivizing.
Now, the government's giving you $32,000 if you move there. Yeah. Someone who wants to start off.
You do it the first month.
I don't know, food's cheap out there.
Scared them away. All right, I'm assuming we are still running.
Yes, we are. Except we're missing Susan.
Oh, we're missing Susan. So as soon as we have our, all of our trustees back, we will continue. All right.
All right, ready?
All right.
All right, well, for those, for those of you tuning in at home, thank you for the delay there while we got pictures done and everything back up. So we are going to move now into our regular agenda. So starting with resolution number one, considering granting an extension of a PUD site plan for 900 King Street LLC.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
Here you go.
Roth gave me this round. I'll read off this.
Okay.
Make sure you have your mic up.
Whereas on January 26th, 2021, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approved a local law amending Chapter 250, Section 250-14 of the Village Code, and whereas the local law revised Village of Rybrook Zoning Code pursuant to plan new and development sites and created a new Section 250-7 E6 under the Village Code to allow for redevelopment at 900 King Street owned by 900 King Associates LLC for age-restricted and senior housing purposes. And whereas on September 14th, 2021, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approved the PUD concept plan proposed by 900 King Associates. And whereas under Section 250-7 E6, the PUD site plan approval is valid for a period of 18 months, with extensions authorized to be granted for periods not to exceed six months. And whereas the original PUD approved by the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees expired on March 15th, 2023. And whereas on January 24th, 2023, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approved a PUD extension for six months expiring on September 15th, 2023. And whereas on February 27th, 2024, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approved the PUD extension for a period of three months, and upon the filing of a properly completed application by 900 King Street Associates to the Westchester County Industrial Development Agency, within the three-month extension period, there shall be a further PUD approval extension for a period additional period of three months. And whereas since the property owner of 900 King Street filed an application with the Westchester County IDA, the site plan extension continued for a total period of six months, thereby providing the extension until September 15th, 2024. And whereas in a letter dated September 9th, 2024, the property owner has requested that the Village Board consider another site plan extension. Now therefore be it resolved that after full consideration of this request, the Village Board of Trustees hereby approves or denies 900 King Associates LLC's request for an extension of the current site plan for 900 King Street for a period of however long the Board decides with the following conditions if the Board chooses to attach any to its extension.
Thank you, Greg. I'm going to hold off on the motions till we have answers to those questions to fill in the blank spaces there. And we are joined tonight by representative of the property, so Mr. Veneziano, would you like to?
Good evening. My name is Tony Veneziano. I'm here on behalf of 900 King Street Owners LLC and Sunrise Development. You know more than I do about the negotiations regarding the valuation that was settled with my client over the last year.
I don't think anybody can hear you on tape.
I can hear me. Can they hear me?
No.
It's the people in television land.
We can hear you, but they can't.
They can't?
There you go. There we go.
Okay, I'm not going through that again. So you know what happened with the tax and the valuation. We've submitted an application to the IDA. We haven't really responded. In the middle, 900 King Street Owners LLC was negotiating with Sunrise Development, and they've executed a contract, and they're probably about two to, two of three months into their due diligence. They're working very hard. Sunrise Development is a publicly traded company. They have 240 communities in the United States. They have 40 new communities that they built over the last five to 10 years. They're very experienced. They had, they've hired Perkins Eastman, who was their architect. They hired JMC, who was the prior engineer, and they hired myself. They've looked through all the resolutions, they've put together all of their budgets, and they're concluding that work, but everything seems to be checking out quite nicely. We had a call last week regarding the architectural application that's been pending at the ARB forever, and they're reviewing the plans to see if there's any modifications they want to make. There are a few. When they're done, I'll bring them to the village, we'll bring them to the ARB. I doubt we'll need an amended site plan because I'm trying to make sure we don't amend that site plan. And then we'll get to the ARB, we'll submit it quickly in the next six weeks or so, and it should take one or two meetings to get to the ARB. The IDA, they're going, they are independently going to track and pursue that. And at that point, we'll have to satisfy the conditions and then pull a building permit. We've spoken to the building Mike Noack about how he's going to process the building permit application, and we'll track that, but those plans take a little while to get completed. So as far as the extension, they would like a year. Your planning board granted a year extension, I think on the 12th of this month. You've granted six-month extensions. I'm just telling you what Sunrise would appreciate, because I don't think they're going to have a building permit ready within six months, no matter how fast they work right now. Because they have to get through the ARB, get those approvals, and then we have to satisfy conditions, and those plans are not going to take a few months to develop. They're going to take a little bit of time to develop and a little bit of time to do the code compliance checking, either here in the village or if the village forms that out to the state agency and lets the state do it. So that's sort of where we are. It's in a better place than it was, and I think we're full speed ahead at this point.
All right, so just a couple of questions, comments, and I'll start it off. Um, first off, I think our code under the, under this only allows for six-month extension. So that, that's the max that we're able to do. Um, and we understand, you know, first of, first off, I just wanna say it's, it's, um, I'm, I'm pleased to see progress. That, knowing that an IDA application has been submitted, I know that there are comments due, um, seeing that there is now a signed agreement with a partner to, to operate and build this. This is, this is good for the community, seeing this activity. Because I know it's something that, we've been at this a long time, as you know. And, you know, we were, I mean, and, you know, the, the, the local law was originally passed on January sixth, twenty twenty-one, but we had years before that where we were going through the EIS process. So this is, this has been a long haul, and, you know, I'm hopeful that we are now starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel, where we can see some activity begin. One of the items that we were gonna talk about was the ARB, because that was the last remaining application due to the village, uh, as far as getting through the boards. That the original plan, um, made it through planning, made it through zoning, made it through village board, never made it through ARB. And so, you know, we were, you know, to hear you say that they should have the, the application into ARB within six weeks, that's good news. And, you know, I hope that they will follow through on that.
There, there were not, back then, and it was COVID-related, there were, I was doing these meetings on my phone, um, there were not many outstanding issues.
Right.
It wasn't like we, Perkins Eastman didn't know what to do. There, it became of, an issue of value engineering, the building, and was this the right building, and was it gonna meet the market? There were other decisions, and Peter Duncan just said, "Hold on." So that's what we did, and now, these decisions, we had a hour and a half call the other day, they're minor details to the site plan, they mean a lot to Sunrise, but are not complex changes to anything. So it should not be a problem at the ARB, and your ARB is, um, I think you have two new members, but it's quite qualified. I just remembered from the last sparring with them, there's architect, they really had an attitude about everything.
They, they take their, they take their volunteer roles seriously.
Yeah, no, they were, they were, they were good.
And, and, you know, I wouldn't expect many meetings in the ARB, you know, hopefully, like you said, it'll be two meetings maybe, uh, that we can get this through. But I think for us to see that application to the ARB would really help confirm to the, to the various boards, and certainly to this board, that this is now very serious and moving forward again, um, which, which is what we really wanna see.
You know, it, I just commented on the zoning part of that contract, but that con, the negotiations took several months, it was a fairly substantial effort on both sides. So that's closed, and the money's passed, and, and, once they're through due diligence, it'll be full speed ahead. Right now, they're acting on their due diligence issues, but once they get through that, we'll be coming right in.
Great, great, and the other, and the other questions that we have, uh, related to this project have to do with the demolition. Um, as you know, this project is located right next to the Lyman Brook Schools, um, or the high school, middle school, not, not all of it. But, you know, when, when, when we've discussed this, you know, and we've, we've mentioned this in the past, we mentioned it through the EIS process of trying to time demolition with the closing of the school for the summer. And so I think that's, and, you know, we've spoken with representatives from Sunrise, with, you know, with Peter Duncan as well, um, that it's gonna be a lengthy process potentially of getting their own architectural drawings, being ready for construction. Demolition can be a separate, um, permitting process, a separate process. And right now, we're in September, the school year just started. If we could see demolition during the summer of this following year, that would certainly be ideal, and something we would really highly recommend to your clients.
So, even before they sign the retainer, I think I told Sunrise that they need to demo the buildings in the summer. Because their position was they wouldn't be ready to get a building permit, therefore they didn't wanna drop the buildings, but there are, they need to, there's certain tests on asbestos, et cetera, that they could certainly do. And then the demolition of that building cannot take that long. So I understand that, as far as demo, it would be much better done in June, July, August, and they know that already, and I'll make sure they know it. And when we come in with any of these changes, or as we start to work with the village during the construction process, you can just emphasize that. But I've already weighed in, f- four weeks ago, on that point. And there was another, during the process, you didn't want, um, construction activity during, like, regents exams or final exams and such, and so they need to abide by that.
Right, and, and I guess it might be difficult for you to answer, but do you know how, approximately how long they're expecting the demolition process to last?
I don't, I can't believe it's six to eight weeks, I just, I mean, I think it's gonna be harder to get the appro, longer to get the approvals required than it will be to take the building down.
So, so I guess what we're asking is, can they be parallel tasks?
I mean, I can, there's no question, they could be, we could start getting the other approvals for the demolition now, while we're doing the other, they can run in, in tandem.
That's what I meant.
You know, we can do that, and, and, they're the client, I can't demo the building. I understand, they didn't hear, they didn't go through what I went through and you went through. So I'll try to get them to understand that between the arbors and the school district, they were very specific in things they wanted, they allowed, wanted the project to go forward, but they wanted certain mitigation, and this is relevant to the, to the village that they're trying to become a member of.
Right, and this would be a, this would absolutely go a long way towards, you know, being good neighbors. To the school and the arbors if they, if they, um, and, and like Susan said, I mean, this absolutely, and, and you said as well, this can absolutely run in tandem, that there are things that can be done to get the process moving for the demolition so that it could occur during the summer.
So I'll tell you, so I just use my fingers to get to March. So in, when, when I'm back here in March, we can have the same conversation, and you can press this issue.
Good question. You say your head, I was already behind you. I, I would like to see you come here in January and give us a status update. I mean, to give you a six-month extension and not have no information, at least some progress reports, and wait that long would be.
Unacceptable.
Unacceptable.
Yeah, no, no, we, I can engage with your attorney, you know, I can tell you, we have the ARB, the IDA, uh, the demolition and the construction, it's four topics, I can give you monthly memos. I mean, they, we're, you know, it's in our interest to get moving on.
Right, and like the board has stated, we're looking for a demo in the summer. So we have to be confident that you're gonna do that, that's gonna, that's gonna take place in the summer. So by these progress reports, I mean, is, is big, is a big, gives us that.
So here's something, but.
Vote, that you want.
Look, there won't be changes circumc, it'd be hard to deny an extension, but in March, you can make that extension uncomfortable until you can secure a commitment that the building's coming down for, in June, the, whenever schools end. Do you follow, do you follow what I'm?
No, no.
This extension, so we get this tension tonight till March, right? And in March, I have to come back for the same extent, another extension, because I will not have a building permit in March. At that point, you can say, "Look, we need, you can secure their commitment to demolish the building."
Well, maybe we say, "Well, you don't get another extension till you have a, a demolition permit in March." Is that fair?
Well, that, I don't.
You know.
The point is, we don't wanna wait six months to hold you to the fire, so that is why we're trying to be thoughtful about our discussion now, and letting you know that we really would like this to go through, you would like this to go through.
As an attorney, I think it would be wise if you come before us, long before the extension is needed.
Right.
And you get your clients to join you, so that if we have questions, we're not asking an attorney to try to explain certain things. Make your clients understand that they are gonna have to feel the heat if they want an extension. It gets diluted tremendously when we yell at you, and you go back and say, "Ah, they weren't happy, but don't worry, you know, I'm a, I'm a good attorney, I can get things done." I want your clients to understand how important it is to us that the demolition take place over the summer. And if there's testing that needs to be done for asbestos, let them start it now. No excuses.
Good suggestion, thank you.
You know, this is, obviously, I'm, I was looking at the resolution, it was going on from extension after extension. I mean, I, I, I get it, financing, bow, you know, stuff, things happening, negotiations fall through, but it's been dragging, you, you understand how we feel, it's been frustrating.
Yes, I do understand how you feel. I mean, it's, it's too much, too long.
Yes, yeah.
Is there a deal, I mean, it's inked already through Sunrise? It's done?
Yes.
Final?
Yeah.
In due diligence, about eight weeks, so it's.
So what does that mean exactly?
If I'm right, and it's eight weeks, it means that July twentieth-ish, they sign the contract, put a significant amount of money down, payment, they have a twelve-week due diligence period.
All right, so to send or something.
Those four more weeks of that.
Right. Those are my rough numbers, I think.
So basically, a shorter extension would work also, so that way we could make everybody see, and we could all be on the same page, and perhaps they should come here, and we should have this conversation while they're here too.
Well, we, the six, look, you could do a day extension, I'll come tomorrow, but it, it seems to me that six months makes sense, but I can come back with them in six we, I mean, I can, we could set a private meetings or a public meeting. Either way, I can talk them about this, I'd suggest we get past the due diligence so they can clear their minds.
That's another month.
Right, and then we can come in, I, I'll talk to them, they're a new client, and they're a publicly traded client, they're a substantial client. So I'll ask them if we could come in the first few weeks of November or something, and we'll come to your board, if you'd like, I'll ask the mayor if he wants the, a private meeting or a public.
Yeah, we'll go through the village administrator and.
He's not here tonight.
But I, I think that's a good idea, I think that's a very good idea, they'll have made another step towards the commitment by getting through the due diligence, they can come in with our ARB plans, whatever we have going on.
I think it should be a public meeting.
We'll, we'll see, I'm not making that decision today.
When, yeah, let, let, when Chris gets back, we'll also.
Not making that decision.
Private allows it to public. Public doesn't.
But we will, we will communicate this with them, Chris, as well, too.
I think we need to see where everybody is, and, and have a meeting of the minds of everybody moving forward, and I don't think it's a bad idea for them to meet with us as well.
Yeah, thus far, they've only basically been dealing with the mayor and myself, I think they need to see the entire board.
Well, Sunrise hasn't dealt with anyone.
You know, I, I think they need, they need to hear what the entire board has to say, because we represent two votes, you need at least three to get anything done. And so, there are three people who basically are, have been silent, vis a vis your client.
Yeah, but look, on the issue of whether you can deny this, this extension, we don't wanna have that conversation, I mean, there's very little change in circumstances, so, but, that said, you still have the right to know what's going on with the project.
Exactly.
Right.
And I wanna facilitate that communication, that's rather simple for me to do. I think giving the six months makes sense, because if you don't give six months, you're just gonna go right to that contract, because Sunrise will, I'm just telling you what I'm gonna hear tomorrow morning. When, when, when the planning board gave me twelve weeks, twelve months on the twelfth, Sunrise wasn't happy. I get an email at eleven-thirty, "I was hoping for eighteen months." Okay, so that's just sort of who you're talking to, and what they're used to, and how they're used to interfacing with communities across the country, and it's a very substantial.
I don't think they realize how much time has gone by already.
Also, if they had been at the planning board, they would have thanked you for getting them twelve months.
No, I, listen, I, I think it's gonna work, I think, but I don't, I think the six months works, but I'll come in in three, I'll be back here in ninety days, who can put me under a timeline, and I'll come back every week.
If we give them.
So I, what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna propose, what I'm gonna propose then is a six-month extension with, um, monthly progress reports sent to the village administrator. And for.
A meeting.
A few representatives and, of, I don't wanna put contrictions on this, a meeting, a, a progress meeting sometime, probably after the new year.
Three months.
Three months.
After the six months.
I want three months from now is, is, is late December when I'm meeting.
Right, January, January's, first week in January.
I just, I always feel like we kick the can down.
But a progress meeting right after the new year.
Okay.
With some representatives, just to, of where they stand, what's gonna need to be done before another extension is potentially granted in March.
And with, that meeting will be a public meeting, what are we doing?
I, I don't wanna determine that just yet.
That's more of a negotiation. We wanna have a public meeting afterwards, that's fine, but that first meeting should not be like this. They, having, they will not be, clients will be quiet at that type of meeting in public. They'll be, they'll talk during a private meeting, but they're not gonna speak.
Well, that's something the board will have to discuss, right?
Yes, and it's something that we'll communicate with Chris as well, too.
Yeah.
It's not something, yeah, I agree, it's not something. And Mr. Veneziano, while, while they're chatting, just, not, just a recommendation as well, too, I know you said your clients wouldn't wanna speak at a public meeting, but I think that it could also go and build some great goodwill with the board, if they at least showed up in that way. As trustee Heiser said, um, again, you're a great attorney, I'm sure, we're going through you, I think that'll mean a great deal if they came here at least in person, even if they don't say anything, I mean, it would be nice if they did, just so they can hear from them directly, I think that would go, go, I mean, I don't wanna speak on behalf of them, and they, they could speak, of course, for themselves, but I think that would go a long way to addressing some of their concerns, if they were at least here in person, to at least be able to speak to them.
Fair enough.
Or at least consultants.
Attorneys are silver-tongued orators. I like to hear from the clients.
And that, it'd probably be easier for them to grant you an extension if they're here as well, could they, they can at least speak to them, ask them any questions.
So let's hear it out again, Ralph, can you?
Yeah. So the resolved portion would be resolved that after the full consideration of this request, the Village Board of Trustees hereby approves nine hundred King Associates LLC's request for an extension of the current site plan for nine hundred King Street for a period of six months with the following conditions. Submission of monthly progress reports, uh, to the village administrator, and a progress meeting with representatives of nine hundred King Associates, include, including, um, the principals, um, in January twenty twenty-five.
Mid-January twenty twenty-five. We don't wanna see you January twenty-ninth.
What's the first meeting in January?
Yeah. Yeah, by the first meeting in January, that's right, put a date on it.
Fourteenth. Fourteenth.
All right, fourteen.
I would say on or before January fourteenth.
Very good, thank you.
That sounds good.
Perfect.
Okay. Good?
Well, better. Is it a hundred percent?
Yeah, um.
Submission to the ARB. The truth is, there's not much.
Would you be, would you be agreeable to us putting a three-month clause on the submission to ARB?
They were very close.
Yeah. But we just have to get, we'll get it done by, three, three months is fine.
Three months. Or let's just say end of year then.
Okay. Yeah, end of year, because that's December. So, end of twenty twenty-four, whatever, something like that.
What's the date? He's writing it up.
End of, end of twenty twenty-four.
By December thirty-first.
Yeah. And that's for the submission, we're not expecting it to be through the process.
No, no, and so, all right, will you finish with those conditions, because everyone.
Well, you should.
Yeah, please.
On the demo, right, you want, you want me to sort of chart out what we have to do pre-demo, so that it's just a matter of how much money it costs them to deal with, it's just a business decision for them, right? Because it, some of those things could take a while, DEC.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, we know that.
That's why we want us started in advance.
But I've gotta start now.
Yeah, now.
Yeah, by charting out what's going to be needed, what permits are needed.
So we'll tell you, and then you'll understand it. So, okay, I'll start to keep this as a current project.
Yeah, and that can be as, and that can be as part of a, one of, you know, a report next month or some, you know, saying, these are the steps that may, that are going to need to be taken. But obviously, you need to let your client know this.
Right, knowing that there will be delays.
They may not be familiar with Rybrook Code and the permit process within Rybrook. And obviously, some of this will come down to the village to make sure that we're doing what we need to do on our end, to process permits in a timely fashion, make sure that you get on the ARB agenda in a timely fashion, all of that.
And the demo permit separate from the building permit. That's because that building permit may take some time.
Destroys and one builds.
Yeah, that's right. You don't want to combine anything.
Right.
Have a motion?
All right, can I?
No, not yet.
Okay, so it would be approval of the resolution for a period of six months with the following conditions: submission of monthly progress reports to the village administrator, a progress meeting with representatives, including principals of 900 King Associates LLC, which, just to be specific, that would not only include Peter Duncan, but it would include representatives of Sunrise.
And Sunrise. No, they don't. So just say 900 King and Sunrise. They're separated.
Got it.
Correct.
As contract vendee, Sunrise.
Right, and where, it's not just your progress, it's where are they? We want their progress.
My progress? What is my progress? I'm just a functionary. It's all about their progress.
On or before January 14th, 2025, and submission of an application to the ARB by December 31, 2024.
So there's an application pending. So just say a submission, because that ARB is still pending.
ARB, ARB, so we said submission.
So submission.
Okay.
Yep.
Submission to the ARB by December 31, 2024.
Updated, updated.
Good with this?
Okay.
Okay. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All right, I think. Any further comment? I think we're...
No, I'm doing a...
Oh, right. I would also, you know, we're not putting anything in, we're not putting anything in the resolution, obviously, but in the interest of being good neighbors, and I know this was some comments that I'd gotten from outside, and from other board members, we would respectfully ask that the owners be good neighbors and, to the extent allowable, allow parking.
What happened? All right, so at some point, they stopped letting people park there?
Correct, yes.
Who wants to park? What people are we parking?
Oh, I think, I think, I think it was mostly school.
Mostly students, students of Rybrook High School.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll let you know their answer.
Yeah, yeah. It had been, it had been going on in the past. I know for a period of time, they had allowed it. They may still be allowing it for all I know. I don't, I don't know whether it is or not.
Fair enough.
So...
Can we charge?
No.
No.
You weren't serious?
Peter, I got $25.00 you're getting.
All right. We have a motion in a second. On the motion, as read.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes. And Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. See you soon. See you all. And I miss you.
We appreciate it. Moving along. Resolution number two, considering the use of village streets on crossway on October 13th, 2024.
Yeah, yes.
Well, first, we need the resolution ready.
Yeah.
Move it to the side.
Okay.
We need the resolution, one minute, though.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook has received an email dated September 19th, 2024, from Jessica, how do you pronounce this?
Diablo.
Diablo, thank you, of Crossway requesting the use of village streets for a pumpkin carving party to be held on Sunday, October 13th, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And whereas the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees is supportive of this proposed pumpkin carving party, now therefore be it resolved that...
Spell pumpkin wrong.
Okay, I'm going to, that the use of Candy Lane on October 13th.
Not Candy Lane.
Crossway, yes, thank you. That was your point, thank you, Mayor. October 13th, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., the proposed pumpkin carving party is hereby approved with the terms to be established by the Rybrook Police Department.
Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Please.
Well, I was going to make a joke that my kids that are in seventh grade might be parking at 900 King by the time this project gets underway, but I was going to...
We hope not.
I hope not, too. I'm glad that's been forward. So, no, no, every year, we do a pumpkin carving party. I teach at Ridge Street, and I have a lot of kids that come. But we, it's a little safer, especially when it gets dark, if we have the street closed. That way, if kids are running from my neighbor to across the street, that it's closed. So that's pretty much it.
So quick, so they carve the pumpkins, and when it gets dark, they put candles in there, and they take pictures.
Yeah, done it like every year since I started teaching in Rybrook. And so my students come, and my, obviously, now I have three of my own kids. We did it before, had kids, when I first started teaching here, and now I've been doing it for years. So it's been primarily in our backyard, but my neighbor, who's actually EMS, EMT, he's been like a little worried, like kids running across the street, and, you know, people kind of sometimes drive through quickly because it's crossway. So I figure we can ask just to put up the barricades for those hours.
All right. Just, I guess Greg will, all the safety precautions necessary, like water, fire extinguishers, and all that good stuff.
Yes, yes. We're, yeah, my son's a boy scout, and they're very good about...
Right. And you'll work with the police department on all of the, because typically, you know, what we, a lot of times, what's said is just, we have to be able to make sure that there's emergency vehicle access through there, should they need it.
Makes sense.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
No, I just have one. Is there going to be a rain date, just in case there's...
No, unfortunately, we're a hockey family, and we're traveling for Ry Rangers the next couple weeks, so it's not that date.
Okay, understood.
All or nothing. All right.
Yeah, all or nothing.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes. And Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Have fun and make pictures.
Thank you, I know. We're married. We're married.
Janan, this should be a fun event to see.
Resolution number three, considering a renewal agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Capital Market Advisors for financial advisory services.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook utilizes the services of Capital Market Advisors to prepare certain required filings related to bonds. And whereas Capital Market Advisors offer services for bond assistance and has prepared a proposed renewal agreement with a fee schedule detailing various bond services from date of approval through May 31st, 2026. And whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to enter into the proposed renewal agreement, now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby authorizes proposed renewal agreement with Capital Market Advisors for bond assistance services according to the fee schedule designated in agreement through May 31st, 2026, subject to modification by council. And be it further resolved that the mayor and village administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary to accomplish the purpose of this resolution.
Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah. All right. Looks like we need that.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. I'll just provide very briefly, just so you guys understand it, in case you don't. So, you know, how about with like, many times we do like a plan for bonds, they're not bond counsel, but Trish will rely on them for like bond guidance. And when you do like continuing disclosure forms that we're required to do, that they'll also assist us with that as well. So just a little backstory, no problem. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes. And Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number four, considering an agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Dover Fueling Solutions for software upgrade for village gasoline pump stations.
Whereas the Superintendent of Public Works recommends the upgrade of the software for the village gasoline pumps due to the current software no longer being compatible. And whereas Dover Fueling Solutions of 3841 Jarrett Way, 1212, Austin, Texas, has proposed an agreement to provide upgraded software to make the Village of Rybrook gasoline pump stations compatible with the existing server. And whereas the Village of Rybrook is interested in accepting the proposed agreement, now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the proposed agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Dover Fueling Solutions of 3814 Jarrett Way, 1212, Austin, Texas, to provide upgraded software to make the Village of Rybrook gasoline pump stations compatible with the existing server, subject to modification by council. And be it further resolved, the mayor and village administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary to accomplish the purpose of this resolution.
Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is Dover the only one that does this kind of software?
I'm not quite sure, to be honest. I know Michael found them, but I, just to give a little bit of backstory to this. So when we talk about the village gasoline pump stations, those are for our stations that are highway garage. But the current software that we have is no longer compatible with the existing server. It's something that Fred updated. So we need to move to a cloud base, so that way our, again, it'll be compatible with the servers, that we, our gasoline pumps will be able to be functioning.
Great. Thank you, and we thank Michael for finding a solution to this. I'm sure, I'm sure it's the best price we can get.
I was going to say, it's the best price.
Yes.
All right. We already have a motion second.
Yeah, we do.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes, I just want to know how much it is.
Let me see, it doesn't say.
It's not on there.
Yeah, it doesn't have it in the...
Induction collection cost. It doesn't give any thirty days.
I don't see it.
Usually, there's an agreement where it says what it is.
Agreement 12 months commencing, but they don't give you...
And what was the previous agreement? So that's now negated?
Don't have one as far as a previous agreement with them, because it's a new software, it's a new company for different software.
Payment here, periodic charges in advance, due in full 30 days.
So we didn't select a plan yet, it looks like. It says subscription services, pricing features, and options depend on a plan.
Right, so I mean, that...
But payments, it tells you how to pay and...
But I will follow up with Michael. Unfortunately, he had to leave for tonight. I'll follow up with him just to clarify exactly.
Yeah. So do we need to...
Yeah, what plan did you get? What plan are we getting?
And how do they differ?
Well, I certainly have faith in Michael to have found the best price, and faith in Chris and Trish to make sure that this is within what they had budgeted for it.
Yes. But what I will do, though, is that once I follow up with Michael, I will communicate with all of you, probably through group email, just to, as a follow-up.
Yeah.
With what plan and everything.
I can also, you're approving it subject to modification by council. I can make sure that any modification that I make includes adding a price to the agreement.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so as amended.
Thank you.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes. And Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number five, considering transfer of capital project balance to general fund to fund the building department's scanning project.
Scanning project, what's that?
That's, no, that's the chief putting away the table that we put out.
Oh, this is for that camera, virtual server infrastructure, no?
No, I'll explain that. Now therefore be resolved that the following budget transfer from capital fund and budget modification for general fund be hereby approved.
Move the computer.
And so I'll just explain this briefly. So basically, what we're doing here is that we're taking some money from the account that Fred no longer needs for IT. We're basically transferring over to the building department, because we're trying to undertake a scanning capital project for them, because as you know, they have a lot of documents.
Yeah, they're scanning.
Correct. So this is what this is for. It's for a scanning retention project for the building department, and we're transferring funds that Fred no longer needs.
Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Straightforward. Thank you for the explanation. Any questions?
Mm-mm.
And again, I will mention it, like I mentioned, with all of these, we are very thankful to our budget and finance team for keeping everything in order like this. I think this is why we come back with clean audits and low stress.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes. And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering authorizing the use of village streets for the Tamarack Tower Foundation Thanksgiving Day Turkey Trot.
Whereas the Tamarack Tower Foundation requests permission to hold its annual Thanksgiving Day Turkey Trot on Thursday, November 24th, from 8:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby authorize use of village streets on November 23rd, that's right, one, November 23rd, from 8:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. on the route described in the letter received September 13th, 2024. And be it further resolved, the village streets shall be used in compliance of the terms and in conditions established by the Village of Rybrook Police Department.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
This is an annual event. This is...
I'm sure I ask every year, what is a Turkey Trot?
It's, again, it's in order to burn off, you know, a lot of calories before you eat a lot of calories.
No, it's pre-eating.
I think it's pre-eating. It looks like it's on Thanksgiving Day. So it is, yes, pre-eating. And I have participated in the past one year with my, with my older son, and I have a feeling he's going to make me participate again.
So this is the Sunday before?
Yes, sorry, November 24th. Yes, Sunday, yes, that's correct. Sunday, November 24th. Yeah, so just to clarify. So in years past, it was done on Thanksgiving Day morning, but this year, they are doing it on the Sunday before. But it's the 24th.
It says Thursday. We just have to make sure it's a Sunday, and yeah.
That's a mistake. I'm so used to it. I'm so used to being on Thursday, so that's why I made that mistake.
Yeah, and then...
It's November 24th.
Well, right, and it'll just have to be adjusted here as well.
I'll make them, I'll fix that.
But it's a good event, and so I've never heard of any issues with it, so...
Why, I didn't doubt that there were any issues. I just, no idea what it was. And I'm sure next year, I'll ask the same question.
So then it's burning off calories that you already, all right. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes. And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number seven, considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on March 26th. Well, this is 24th, that's 26th here. 24th, 2024.
Yeah, that's wrong.
I'm going to look back to March here.
Yep, same here.
It would have been the 26th.
Okay, so respect it to March 26th. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes for the meeting held on March 26th, 2024.
Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right, administrators report.
Yes, just a few events that definitely want to mention, because we have a very busy October coming up. Just before I do that, I just want to just give my personal appreciation for our highway department, as well as our police department, and as well as our volunteers. We came out September 14th. I was the captain of the Rybrook site, where we had an annual community cleanup, where we clean up garbage on, through Bowman Avenue. And also, just to give a thanks to RPW Group, who's the owners of 800 West Chester, for allowing us to divert traffic onto their private road. Because again, it is a private road, and it's not public, but of course, I'm guilty of it, too. We all use it from time to time. But I definitely want to thank them for helping the event go smoother. So in terms of, again, of our busy October schedule that we have coming up, well, first, I should also mention that mini golf, unfortunately, is canceled. Again, that was supposed to take place this Saturday, but unfortunately, due to poor signups, that is no longer going to take place. But our third annual pumpkin patch is going to take place October 12th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. That's going to be at Pine Ridge Park. On October 26th, On October 26th, we will have two events, we're going to have our annual Halloween in the park, where again, you get to come, bring your dog, have it dressed up, and then we'll, amongst a few of us who are judges, will vote on who are the best ones, but it's definitely always a lot of fun, and definitely each year we have more and more dogs participating, I believe last year we had at least in the, don't remember exactly, in the 50s, so it's definitely gotten more popular over the years, and I think, Sal, you were a judge in one of them.
Yeah.
I mean, last year, yes, I've been, I've been fortunate to be a judge last couple of times, it's always a blast.
Those costumes are great.
Yes, some of them are very creative, I'm always surprised each time, but then that same day, we're doing it for the second time, last year we tried it for the first time, it was a huge success for our trunk or treat, so we'll be competing amongst ourselves as a village employees, but we're going to rely on the residents to help us determine, like last year, who is the best one, so I know that we'll be, coming out there, ourselves will be organizing the teams, and then whoever is the best one will have, of course, some bragging rights, and we'll figure out a little prize amongst village staff, but definitely, but we need the residents' help to, for us to make that a success, so Recreation won last year, and they keep rubbing it in, so we're definitely, we're going to try to beat them this year. And on November 2nd, we're giving it a try for the second time, for a scavenger hunt, unfortunately, in May, we tried it, but we had to cancel, low attendance, we're hoping not to do that again this year, so, again, please sign up, and it's been done in the past, it's a, it's a fun event, and then we're, that will also be at, all these events will are at Pine Ridge Park, is where we hold all of them, per exception of the birthday. So, again, that's our event schedule, I did want to mention something, a message regarding a leaf seasoning, because that's going to be starting on October 7th, so it's just an FYI for residents, and we'll be posting out notifications as we get closer, but starting on October 7th, up until around December, so it's about a 12- to 13-week program that is run by Michael Nowak, our superintendent of Public Works, as well as with our highway department staff, and then, again, you leave your leaves out on the front lawn, and then our highway staff will come in our vacuum truck and suck it up. On the website is where we have a notice with all the stipulations that we ask that the residents just please abide by to make this process go by smoother, and we're hoping to get there potentially during a peak season, about once every three weeks, of course, it's all weather permitting, dependent on what the weather forecasts are for this day, I know that Michael Nowak and Jess Carpenteri, who's his assistant, have an Excel formula that they use to determine when they get to what street, but that'll be, again, on October 7th, is when it'll be starting until about the end of December. And just the last thing I just wanted to mention real briefly is regarding a sustainable Westchester, our new Westchester Power ESCO agreement that's coming into effect November 1st, and then I, we'll talk more about that later, but the letters did come out, I know some, I think pretty much, and have you guys probably received them at this point, so again, if you have received it, again, please, again, do not throw that out, please read it, again, it's very important regarding our ESCO agreement that starts on November 1st, and be the village, we have decided to opt into the 100% renewable green energy program, however, again, you may choose to opt out of the program, if you choose to do so, just please be aware that if you do so, it may take a billing cycle or two for that change to be seen on your monthly bill, and again, Con Edison is still going to be the supplier